All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. The 16th day of June. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, united, individual, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the flag of Michigan and to the state for which it stands, two beautiful conundrums united by our roots of steel, where equal opportunity and justice to all is our ideal.
Sandy, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Shippers here. Spohman here. Stevens here. Mayor Falcone.
Here. And at this time, we would need a motion to approve the agenda as presented if there are any updates.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
We asked Mr. Petcher last week about the collective bargaining agreements. We've never, for 15 years, I mean, we've never done them in the public. We've always done them in closed session and thought we should be consistent on that versus putting these items in the open just for another purpose. I'm not sure why we changed that. I know that Mr. Petcher responded for time, but...
Maybe because there wasn't anything that needed to be discussed with council that it was pretty standard stuff? Or it didn't have to be discussed in closed session?
Well, Marcus, could you share with us what the answer was to that question?
Yes, Councilmember Stevens is correct. We have traditionally gone into closed session to discuss CBA agreements. I did learn that with respect to our last fire CBA, we actually did not. And looking at the police CBAs, they seem rather straightforward to scroll around. We didn't believe there was anything very sensitive in them. And therefore, I thought we'd capitalize on the timing of time spent in closed session versus the open session just to put it on the open session agenda. But I'm indifferent on it. It doesn't make any operational difference with respect to how we go through them this evening if it's something that the council wants to move or not. Doesn't matter to me.
The problem is, though, is if we table this or whatever, the pay wouldn't be retroactive. So we would be really jeopardizing our staff if we did that. There are some issues that, looking at it now for the first time, that I would like to have had prior to that or would have liked to have knowledge of, of the language. One particular area is the college courses.
Well, let me interrupt you. The council can vote to go into closed session to discuss the negotiations and strategies associated with these contracts. So that opportunity is not lost. You could do that now if you so choose to do it.
Mm-hmm. That's what I would like to know.
Or we can do it when we come to it on the agenda.
Right.
Or at any time that we're discussing it.
Yes, to do it tonight. Yes.
You mean do the...
If you wanted to go into closed session.
At the time in the agenda?
Yeah, even if we start to talk about it and we feel like it's something that we want to discuss in closed session during that discussion, we could just say, "Let's go do this in closed session." Okay?
That's fine, yep.
Okay. All right. I'll support. Councilmember Shippers? Motion.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries. At this time, we need to look to approve the consent agenda. You do have two folders in front of you that...
I apologize.
Bless you for it. Don't open it yet. At this time, we will open the floor for anyone who would like to come forward and address any topic that's on the agenda this evening. If you do come forward, if you wouldn't mind writing your name and your phone number, address for Sandy, it's very helpful to her.
I'm Glenna Anderson for 13 Leeson Avenue, Cadillac, Michigan. I am here as a member of the Cemetery Board of the City of Cadillac and think you all know Brian Allen Bass, who is with me. And we just wanted to give you an update on some of the, one of the findings. We have had Jerry Greve from the Grand Old Army, the Grand Army of the Republic, which, and their members are descendants of Civil War veterans. And they have, they have been going around to different cemeteries and offering the option. They do a sonar of the area. And I don't know if you're aware of how many people would be aware, but when you go into the Maple Hill Cemetery, the kind of the middle main gate, soon after you enter, on the right-hand side, there's a section with a flagpole. And in there are buried Dutchens of the Civil War from, I assume, pretty much Cadillac, Wexford...
Wexford County.
Wexford County. And there are several graves in there. Brian said that he has, I think, 13 of those identified, and there are about 50 graves, about 50 graves. And I don't know if they've given you this. This kind of shows, they did a sonar check. And every one of these, on his sonar, every one of these squares was an anomaly, which means there's something underneath there. It could be a rock, it could be a grave. They don't know for sure what it, which it is. But if you can see, there's kind of a pattern, kind of rows, like some are a little bit over, but there are kind of a pattern of rows that would indicate that most likely they probably are graves. And their group is partly involved in helping communities work on raising, not really working on raising funds, but they have, we can put monuments up listing names of Civil War veterans from Wexford County that would have served, which sounds like kind of a nice idea. There's, there are two or three steps to it. The first step would kind, and he had, Mr. Greve had talked to the Historical Society. And then Charles Labarre, who's another one of our members, he's on the Genealogic, a member of the Genealogical Society, and he was going to talk to them. The first part of it would be, have to be a historical search to see if we can identify, you know, we can't put a person with an actual grave, but to identify people that have, that served in the Civil War from this area. And so they have to name, so they could be honored possibly with a monument someday. So the first part of the project are people that do that type of thing and are able to work on trying to identify as many as possible. And then the second approach would be, probably we'd have to raise some money. As a board, we're not really raising the money, but we're maybe getting some information out there to groups that might be interested, such as AmVets, Genealogical Society, Historical Society, Veterans of the Foreign War, the American Legion, groups that, just to let them know that this is, you know, this is something that could possibly be done if it was, if there's enough community interest to make it go. And we just kind of wanted to, you know, inform the city council and Mayor Falcones, you two, to let you know that this, we have got some, you know, we do have some graves. And it is kind of a very, kind of neat to think we have Civil War veterans there. And I guess they do some kind of a cer, they have some kind of a ceremony they do when they dedicate these monuments that's supposed to be very neat, too, which we would be able to have if we had this. And we don't really know if there's a community, a group with a community interest that would be willing to work on maybe some fundraising or for sure if the Historical Society would be interested in being kind of spearheading identification by going back into records and, you know, seeing who has served. And obviously, those could have to be people that have the knowledge of doing the historical research, but there are people that do that. And so Brian, do you have anything to add?
No, you're doing the talking.
I'm doing the talking, you're just...
You got it.
Okay.
The first giveaway with the G A R site that is obvious, if you go see it, is the amount of flag holders that are there.
Yeah.
For only having 13 people, there's the approximately between 40 and 50 flag holders. So that was the first giveaway that there's more there than what we ever saw.
All right, cool.
And Jerry with the G A R, very enthusiastic group. Once they get involved, they get, they get things going. And I have a lot of positive things I think are going to come. At least some type of monument with some names on it. And, but I work hand in hand with them as best I can with what I've got.
Great. Good group of people. Thank you. A good group of people. He's been to about three of our meetings, I think, in the last year or two. And it would be a really nice community thing, I think, to honor. I remember our history and a way to honor our people. And it is, if you happen to drive in the cemetery, just kind of check it out because it does kind of give you pause. And I, for years, never realized it was there. And I have relatives in that old part of the cemetery. So I do go in there, you know, occasionally, and I never realized it until he came that first time, I think, to talk to us. I didn't know it was there and it's, but there is a flagpole with a flag. And thank you very much. Yeah, and so we just wanted to share that with you. Thank you very much.
Glad you did.
Thank you.
So anyone else? If not, at this time, we'll close public comment. And now we move on to the consent agenda and the approval of set agendas. We do have two envelopes with closed meeting minutes that we'll need to take a few minutes
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
No.
Malama?
Yeah. Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries.
I do have a question, though, for some enlightenment for myself, if it's appropriate. May I ask a question about approving minutes of closed sessions? Are we going back in time as well as staying current until we get to a certain point? Is that our strategy?
I believe we've gone back now as far as we were going to go back. Now we're moving forward. And so any current closed sessions will be approved, a minute will be approved at the meeting following.
Okay, because I don't have much of a memory beyond March or...
Right.
Of any details of it. That might have happened in that meeting. Before daylight saving time. I remember it was a pretty bad winter, though. I do remember that.
Okay. And two. The next thing that we have on the agenda is communication.
Shippers, a communication from Troy Van Veen from the downtown Cadillac, Cadillac County. Display, display of banners from July 21st to July 28th for the sidewalks.
Is anyone here to chuck it up there?
I'll make a motion to approve the display of the banner from July 21st to July 28th for sidewalk sales. Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries. Then we have appointments.
Yes, we have a recommendation regarding the reappointment to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority of Carla Falcons for a three-year term to expire on 5/19/2017.
At this time, I would ask to the council that I be refused from the reappointment.
Okay. So we would need a motion if she concurs for reappointment? Excuse me, starts to approve whether or not we will allow her to recuse herself. Sorry.
I'll make a motion to, I had a request of Mayor Falcones or whomever to recuse herself from this next vote. Is that okay?
Support.
Sorry.
Motion to support any discussion. All right, a roll call, please.
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Now, I was jumping ahead on myself, now we will look at a motion to, for the reappointment.
Is this common for a mayor to serve on this committee? Or is it, if it isn't common, it's not a conflict or anything?
I'm not aware of a conflict, but I couldn't tell you if it's common or not, to be honest with you. I'd have to look at this one. Is it common? You've got the experience.
We don't. This one's unique because you ran the committee before, before you were mayor.
I guess common might not have been the correct question. It could have been whether or not, yeah, this works with procedural issues as they might move forward through this committee and, as they relate to the city council.
We had a very brief conversation with staff. Nothing came up. I don't know if Mike, if you had anything that came up in your head? Let's see if we can win a vote. Do you mean that?
Has it been done in the past, Mr. Stevens? I mean, I'm just asking. I don't know.
It was a type of, like the planning board, I know, has one, the Board of Review does. This one doesn't recall one since council, but you were on there before, which is, which is really unique, that it was a committee that you were on prior to. So this is looking like a reappointment of being a citizen for that committee. That's probably the only, I'm over here asking why you've recused yourself, but I think I'm hearing like...
We can't ask her because she can't be involved with those.
I'm not answering.
But she must not have thought that it was a problem that she waited to be reappointed. I can tell by the pensive look on his brow.
The print just needs to get smaller every...
Oh, my gosh.
I can say at the time that the paperwork came through, there didn't seem to be a conflict that we had thought, thought of. It doesn't mean that there isn't, but we didn't see that.
Don't get me wrong, I think it's great. She wants to continue to serve.
That is a good question, though. I haven't clarified.
Just to make sure.
Or if they bring something to, and that's what I'm sure what he's looking at, is if the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Committee brings something to council, how that interacts?
I'm actually looking at the makeup of the board itself. And so the statute provides, well, not less than five, nor more than nine persons appointed by the chief executive officer of the municipality, subject to the approval of the governing body. The chief executive officer, as defined under the act, is the mayor.
Would that be moved over to Mayor Proton, then?
But it doesn't, it doesn't limit, it doesn't limit the persons, as far as I can tell, who may serve on the board.
You have a good clarification. Some committees we have are appointed by council, some are by the mayor. They each have their own separate way that, so this one, kind of like the Housing Commission, where the mayor would bring a recommendation to us, and then we, we approve that. It has to be approved by council, but the recommendation comes from the mayor. And that's good to know, too. It's up to nine members.
Was there a motion?
There is not now.
Not yet. We're waiting to make sure that it's copacetic.
You still checking? Yeah, I would go ahead and move forward, but I'll take a closer look at it after the meeting to ensure that it's not a problem. I don't see a problem under this section.
I'll make a motion to approve the Carla Falcons as a member of the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, a reappointment for a three-year term expiring May 19th, 2017. Support.
We have a motion and support any further discretion. Okay, if we could have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
That's you.
Thank you. Okay, move on to the city manager's report, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. The first item on the report is a request for confirmation of the contract with respect to the 2014 North Boulevard Trail Project. Bruce, could you just briefly orient us or explain where the connection piece is of the trail over by Cadillac Park?
Right. This project's going to run from the bridge at Kennedy Park, a little, over the, little creek there, up going west along North Boulevard. And once it gets where now, it dumps onto North Boulevard, we're going to bring it into the Carl T. Johnson Museum property. Because right where it dumps in, it's a low area, it floods a lot, and we want to keep the people away from that narrow area there. So we're actually going to be in the property of the Carl T. Johnson under their permission. And then we'll get them closer to 115 before they cross. Obviously, it's, and plus, the whole, the whole path right now is six foot wide. We're going to widen it out to eight foot. Putting a snowmobile mix asphalt down so it can, if, if in the future, if you ever want to make that a snowmobile rally, it'll be capable. It's obviously not planned right now, but it gives you the option. So it's funded 100% by the state of Michigan. Actually, they're paying me, you approved this earlier, paying me to engineer it. So it's 100% funded and plus we get, we get some of my, my salary back. It's a positive thing for everyone. Peach contracting at a follow-up was the lowest bidder at $180,758.60 than is being recommended this evening.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the bids on peach contracting in the amount of $180,758.60, with 100% of the cost being paid by the state of Michigan.
Okay, Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries.
That's the DNR trust fund, right?
Yes.
That I think should be mentioned. Not the state just giving us money for it.
Mayor, and members of council, at this time, it would be appropriate, should you wish to move the next three items into closed session, to do so. And then when we get to the end of our agenda, we could cover that as a part of our closed session. The next three items involve the collective bargaining agreement for the police union, both for patrol and for command, as well as for the fire department wage opener.
Based on the concerns that we heard earlier, is there a motion to include this into your closed session?
I'd like to make a motion that we include the consideration of the Cadillac Police Officers Association Collective Bargaining Agreement, the Cadillac Command Officers Association Collective Bargaining Agreement, and the International Association of Firefighters 工会 Union Number 704 Collective Bargaining Agreement, to stay consistent with past policy of how we handle union contracts.
Support. Good discussion. It surprises me that we're choosing to go into closed session for something that we have decided that we could discuss in open session. After all the discussions we've had recently about we're going into closed session too much. And, you know, I think we need to consider everything while we do this, that some of this information, we can just talk about publicly. And we have an opportunity to do that here.
Well, and I appreciate that. I knew it because Marcus kind of echoed in that it was a comical moment that, that I would bring this up since I've been pushing open government. But this is also a personnel issue. There isn't a gray area with the Urban Meetings Act. If we have that concern, I, I think it's when we get into some of these issues, like we have with the closed session, that are just written, legal opinions without any, any idea what they are. That's, that's the concern. We only have four unions. They negotiate for years, unless like a fire. It's not a very common thing. My, my concern was, we handle other ones always in closed. And why we're pinpointing the police officers if we have discussion points or items that come up. And I just feel that staying consistent, it just looks more professional. But at the same time, I do understand your point of the closed sessions, but I could see where, when it comes to personnel, I mean, it'd be the same thing of me saying now, when Mr. Petcher's contract comes out, we should talk about it in the open. And that, you know, with personnel, it's a different story.
I think whoever you're talking about, when you're doing a performance review, they have the ability to say, "I want to go into closed session." And we should honor that. This is different.
Well, are we setting a precedent?
I don't think so.
With other unions? I mean, we did it once. I mean, in most situations, you have to be concerned about precedent. The second thing is, and I've done it, is, I just received this now. I get asked out in the community, "How come you gave them a raise?" As an example, or why. And I'd like to at least be able to be, to say, "Well, we did, but this, this, and this was dealt with in this manner." I mean, I like... I mean, I like to be able to answer what I voted on.
I think you can ask those questions right now and get that answered.
Well, I would like to.
I have a question. Are these, this isn't like a personnel review or something. These contracts are public documents, correct?
Correct.
And anyone could see these contracts? I know that as a member of the negotiating team at my school, we negotiate in private and come up with the contract, and then once it's ready for the board, it's a public document, and it's always dealt with in the public. It's always dealt with right out in the open, so that everybody knows, this is what, you know, this is what we're offering. And there's been discussion at the board level, asking why this, why that. And what happens is, when those discussions take place in the public eye, like if you have a question, or somebody has a question about why a pay raise, when you are talking about that in a closed session, it's somehow, I don't know, it, let me go back to, at the school board, they discuss it, and then it's presented as to why that happened, and everybody hears it, and everybody sees it. And it isn't like, aha, they're getting a raise right now because so and so, you know, you know how that can happen. So I think that a contract that has been negotiated and is open for approval is not necessarily like a private personnel issue. Like if we were an evaluation, or a personnel issue that we needed to deal with, dealing with an individual, but a contract for an entire group of people is public.
Can I take that one step further? Or if the city manager wasn't comfortable with what was done here, and he wanted to have an opinion from the council, then we would go into, you know, I don't know if I should, you know, they really want 3%, and I think I can only offer them 0.5%. And, you know, that's their final offer. We have to go into closed session and discuss what we're gonna come back with, or the negotiation process.
Going back to what council person Shepard has said, boards are given contracts ahead of time so that they have time to digest it. In a union, and you would remember this, and the same thing with the police, I'm sure that there's a time period that they have that contract in their hand to look over before they take a vote. And my point is, once again, is that it would be nice to be able to take a look at something and be able to digest it, so you have some questions.
Well, then let's take some time now.
That's a different answer than whether or not.
Well, but in closed session, at least you can hear the dialogue from different people.
Well, couldn't you hear the dialogue from different people in open session?
I just don't think that, we've never done this before with the union, and I just think it's a personnel issue, and I really think it's better to do it.
The opinion seems suspect, too. I think this, they're trying to build a relationship with the police department with the last six months. The questions have come out, why us? Why are they doing this? And they have it in the paper the day before. And, you know, this is 15 years, we've never, this would be the first time, I think Mr. Petch has mentioned the fire union, but I think it was a similar thing, where we were not doing a full-union contract, we were just extending one or bringing back a pay raise, we've done this in the open. But to do a discussion, my concern, and it's gonna be up to council, but you take away the discussion, because it's taking away, and again, if it's an authority, I know Mr. Petch has mentioned to me recently, this policy that I've been begging him to share with me, that hasn't been in writing, but there's a policy, but if this is not council's authority, then we should deem it. But if it is, we have a responsibility, anytime if one of you, I'm comfortable with this contract, but if somebody wasn't, you're putting in the spot, having a public discussion on something, 'cause we haven't approved it yet, and we may need to go back.
But as we shared earlier, if there is something that we are not comfortable approving, Mr. Homie has said that we can ask to go into closed session to discuss that.
Your feeling is this will be a new present, we're gonna do all contracts?
No, no, we're setting any questions here, we're just talking.
So we're just picking shoes?
If I may just intervene, that's where I would disagree respectfully, that on a may as near the basis, if there's something that we felt like we need to go into a closed session to discuss, we certainly would. Using the Steelworkers Agreement as the most recent example, there were some real significant changes to compensation was being laid out, especially with the differences between utilities versus public works departments, and all the different licensing certifications that each of the different layers within those departments have and get and achieve, and then what the latest compensation to get to those things. And we felt, you know, given some of the, some of the real complex issues surrounding that, and with respect to just the general overall cost of the contract, trying to explain that, it was, I think, more advantageous to everybody just to do it in the manner that we did. Now, the document itself is a public document, and obviously afterwards, I've submitted it for you. In this case, certainly there are some issues that we worked out amicably, I must add, between both management and the police department, but we didn't see that there was necessarily any real complex issues. And again, frankly, it was a toss-up, which we were talking about putting together for this week, whether to put it as a closed session agenda, or just have it in an open session, knowing that we had several items under the closed session we were gonna be talking about. We just thought we'd just put it on the open session. And again, I'm not trying to delay any further council conversation or discussion, but really, the choice, at this point, is up to the council, if we want to keep it as it is, or just move it, and then we can discuss it.
This would take a step, another step away where council's pulled out of the process.
No, no, we're part of the process.
We're doing it right here.
We had it all laid out in the newspaper already, because it's in the public eye. Usually, that's never happened before prior to a contract. And I'm just trying to think of our employees' aspect of this. When they're pinpointed as certain group, that's not happened in any other groups. But thank you.
Okay, you said that this was an amicable negotiation, and everybody was happy with this, so.
In fact, I apologize for cutting it off, but ideally, we would have liked to have even had it done earlier, but there was still some back and forth up until last week, you know.
If they weren't happy with it, I'm assuming they would be here, when it was on the agenda.
Of course, I would know the reasons.
Okay, is there any further discussion? We have a motion and support. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Malama?
Um, yes.
This is to go into closed session with it?
Yes. Again, the, correct?
That's correct.
Peppers?
No.
Spohmen?
No.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
No.
Want to take a few minutes and read this?
Yep.
The motion is supportive.
Well, no, no, 'cause there's something, you mentioned something, will you please bring it up?
No, I don't, actually, I, I think that we, you know me, 'cause again, since we're gonna talk in the open, I always think we need to be looking at our employees and seeing how we could help them. And they've already approved this. I just think, you know, that we, for future, these are highlights that are in our council communication, which means there's some of them. So we're not even gonna know all of the changes that have happened, where we usually get that outline, and maybe that's what this is, but.
Can I tell what the change was?
So I have a question about the college courses. Can I ask a question, please? The change being that any member of the unit that previously received an education bonus that would otherwise be eliminated by this revision will continue to receive an annual education payment equivalent to what was received in 2014?
That is correct. There are two members of the unit that are essentially grandfathered in at the rate, after we went through a very thorough analysis last year. Rates actually got adjusted lower. They're both grandfathered in at that lower rate. Everybody else who's compliant remains compliant as well. And then the program essentially has gotten completely rebooted, where there's been a schedule set up based upon your degrees earned, whether it's an associate's, bachelor's, or master's.
Good. I'm glad that certification made, I know that was a concern by some citizens that came through.
Is there anything that you want to go over with these?
Well, I was gonna just kind of walk through the communications. Both the communications are the same. The increases, that was one of the last things that we discussed last week. One of the units had it as receiving the 1% adjustment on an annual basis, with a half percent adjustment in 2017, whereas, I'm sorry, excuse me, whereas the other unit actually had a different day off holiday, and then that changed right at the end to where they went with the same cost of living adjustment schedule of having a 1% adjustment effective July 1 of 14, 15, and 16, with a half percent adjustment made in January of 17. Additionally, there were a variety of letters of understandings, and it's not uncommon to have those, excuse me, that get added during the course of a contract year that addressed various issues. We'd agreed to try to clean up the agreement as thoroughly as we can, and adopted the letters of understandings actually into the, into the agreement, so that they're no longer separate addendums. I just mentioned about the complete revamping of the education benefit. We also revamped the insurance areas as well. As we know, there was a lot of discussion about those areas as well in the past. We clarified the language with respect to the citywide 90-day COBRA premium benefit as a part of that.
Can you back up a second?
Yeah.
Your comment about rewriting, for clarity, the college course piece, it's gonna be rewritten more than this?
Yeah, yes. It's in the, it's actually in the tentative settlement agreement that is left in front of you on the back of the first page.
That's what I'm asking, is that, is there something?
That is it.
Okay.
That is it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I thought you were just referring to the notes.
It's already completed, that's the rewrite.
That is really it. Additionally, the shift premium is increased by 2 cents from 40 cents per hour to 42 cents per hour. Oh, and can you clarify a little bit about what shift premiums?
Yep, if you work 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM, you get an extra premium for working the late shifts.
Additionally, the references to the Director of Public Safety has been amended to the Director of Law Enforcement Services. And then the recommended action would be for the city council to adopt both of these by motion. When I say both, I'm referring for both the command union and the patrol union. The command union covers everyone at sergeant level, rank, and higher.
Did you have any clarification that you want?
I was wondering, with this new law that's in place, where we can't go back, 'cause I know that was one of the concerns of trying to get this approved on time, is you can't go back and give retro if there's a pay increase?
Correct.
Is that a mandatory you can, or in the future, could the city choose to still do that as part of their agreement?
My understanding that the state prohibits a retroactive increase to collective bargaining units, that doesn't prevent the city from providing additional compensation in some other manner. So if, for instance, if the city council wanted to provide some kind of signing bonus or something to that effect, I believe that that is allowable, but you can't go back, you can't have anything and call it a retroactive, a retroactive penalty.
Back 10 years ago, there was that question raised when I was negotiating, and if I recall, it is if both parties agree that it can be retroactive, go into that agreement. In other words, as a preliminary guideline to negotiating, that you would, that you could. Now, I don't, I know the law's changed, that's why I'm asking that question. And not too long ago, in China, it was within a couple of years, that was a year ago.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2014, 2017 collective bargaining agreements for both the Cadillac Police Officers Association and the Cadillac Command Officers Association as presented.
Support.
Any further discussion? Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Sherpers?
Yes.
Spohmen?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes.
Do you have a show to carry to hear that?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. The next item is somewhat similar, but yet different. It's not a new collective bargaining agreement, or extension thereof of one, but rather, it is a request for a 1% increase effective July 1, 2014, to the Cadillac Firefighters Union, the IAFF, or the fire department. The, just as a point of reference, the collective bargaining agreement that the city has with the IAFF is a little bit different. At the time that we put it in, we offered, and finally, we also offered the same thing with respect to police as well, that if they didn't want to try and schedule out a slate of cost-of-living adjustments over the period of time that the agreement is valid for, that we would be okay with that, we would just slate it in as a zero, and then on an annual basis, have a wage reopen. And so we have had our wage reopen once before, and now we have our wage reopen a second time. It is being recommended this evening for a 1% adjustment to be effective July 1, 2014. And again, this is all very similar to what the other unions, as well as non-union, are receiving too.
And this is what we budgeted for?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the modification to the wages for the International Association of Firefighters Local Union 704 as presented.
Support. Any discussion?
Just a quick question, then, is that contract still active to a certain date?
It is.
Is there a rate if we know that?
Want to say 2016? 2015?
It'll be year three. This is July 1.
Okay.
To June 30, 15 will be year three.
15.
Thank you.
We shall thank you, we had another year.
Okay, Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Spohmen?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Peppers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carried. Next thing on our agenda is the adoption of ordinances and resolutions.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. The first item is a request to adopt a resolution for a license to approach on public property. The first item is a request to adopt a resolution for a license to encroach on public property. As everyone may or may not recall, or hopefully you will recall, back at your last meeting in May, the City Council did provide for the temporary relocation of refuse dumpsters essentially to help accommodate Clam Lake Air Company and eventually growing out in their back, the back area. After that approval was made, staff did reach out to Clam Lake Air Company to discuss about the logistics of doing so. As a part of that, it was essentially finalized, but in fact, it was going to be an enclosure. We do think an enclosure would be a wonderful addition to the site. It'll help camouflage the dumpsters from people that are walking by, from cars and from other things. However, we just wanted to make sure that, you know, we dotted all of our i's and crossed all of our k's and in doing so, we are going to require a revocable license to encroach on the public property to accommodate this at this point. Clam Lake Air Company has been made aware of it, and I do believe Don is here this evening kind of representing, representing the entity. The resolution is in your packet, and it is attached to the packet as well as my online version. It does provide that all costs associated with this project, along with all insurance is borne by the applicants, and it also, excuse me, also provides that the city may revoke the license at any time and for any reason. I'm not sure if there's any questions about it at all.
I have a second.
Mike just pointed out there's a typo in the back of the resolution. Can you change the date to 2014, Sandy?
Do you have any other?
There's all those hands off.
Okay. Don is here. Would you like to say anything?
The party's covered it all.
Okay, all right.
Okay, I will make a motion to adopt a resolution for a revocable license to encroach on public property.
Any discussion? Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Sherpas?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. More should carry.
The next item is the request to adopt a resolution that will introduce ordinance vacating a portion of Weber Street and especially for the purposes of setting the public hearing for July 21, 2014. This might sound a little bit like deja vu. The City Council did have some significant discussion about this in the past. Subsequent to those conversations, the deal between Cadillac Wexford Transit Authority and Don's Auto Clinic has finally gone through. The facility has been sold to Don's Auto Clinic. At this time, the city has the responsibility of setting the public hearing, again, to have the discussion about the vacation of Weber Street. As mentioned in the council communication, in order to tie the sites together, to help with improved usage, and, you know, especially for the future development of the site, the vacation of Weber Street is an important item for Don's Auto Clinic in order to make the project work. Again, all that we need to do this evening is to set the public hearing. Given the nature of the vacation, it does set it out not just for two weeks, but for four, so.
Can you make a motion? I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution to introduce the ordinance vacating a portion of Weber Street and to set the public hearing for it on July 21, 2014. Question. Is, are all the neighbors being notified?
I believe so. You have to double check with community development.
Please.
I've been aware of it in the past, so as well. Let me get to the public hearing.
Okay. Good. Anything else? Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Sherpas?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. More should carry. Next thing on our agenda is the, for informational purposes, is the Minnesota Maple Hill Cemetery Board meeting that was held on May 19. And at this time, we will open the floor for public comment again, and at this time, if you would leave your name and address and limit your words to three minutes, we would appreciate that.
All right, hurry up, man, again. And just in case nobody understood what I said to the last meeting.
It was pretty cryptic.
You think so? They're not my words. They're your words. I deal with your comment tonight. That's history. So if I offended anybody, that's tough. You said it, and you didn't send me an invitation for coffee. Thank you.
Most of you know Julie C. Baldwin, 926 Sundberg Street in Cadillac. I still have some concerns about our water bill and the run water notice. The last information I got from the water department was $18 cap. I seen $18 come off my bill one time, and my bill went from $40, $45 up to $80. So most of the month, I received $3 and $4 off my bill. So I'm still concerned about that, and I'd like, you know, some information either put on the agenda, something that somebody addresses this, because it's becoming a problem for a lot of people. They're on the verge of getting their water shut off because they can't make those bills up. So, thanks.
Thank you, Julie.
Hey, if not, we'll close public comment and move to go to the order. This evening, we'll go ahead and start with Councilmember Sherpas.
I think I'll start with coming back into town. I was out of town last weekend visiting my daughter, and when we came back into town, it was the end of Back to the Bricks and just missed it. I was so bummed that I missed it. We tried to go fast, but we didn't go fast on the highway because, well, you shouldn't break the law. So, but when we got here, we drove around the lake and then, and it was just so full of people. There were people doing everything. Then just the other night, I was taking my daughter-in-law back home after work, and I drove along the lake again and just came and came through town. And when I got to the end of the lake where I would turn up toward my house, I just turned around and walked downtown because, I mean, drove downtown, because along the lake, there were so many people out. There were families with kids, there were old folks in their carts, there were people on bicycles, on roller skates, two wheels, four wheels, three wheels. It was just full of people. And as I was driving slowly, paying attention as I drove, not being distracted, I was noticing as people passed and saying things to each other. So then when I came around downtown, I saw people walking downtown and just everybody out, and I just thought, what a delightful place to be. And it was, it was early in the evening, and I would love, I know that our downtown merchants work really hard and like to be home with their families, but I would like to just throw out that maybe we could do one night a week where we're open late downtown and people can be walking around in the evening. There's, there's wonderful shops down there, there's things, just the whole community spirit, and it doesn't get dark till 10 o'clock now. And if we could have people walking around downtown one night a week, Friday night, or just pick, pick a night, any night, that becomes our late night downtown, I think that would do wonders for our community and for our whole downtown. Just saying. Thank you.
Councilmember Stevens?
I had the conversation on my first topic too, as well as to, what an amazing event, the volunteers, the Visitors Bureau, everything they did, fantastic. A lot of the volunteers that made it happen, our staff. Again, this is another thing that gets overlooked is how wonderful our staff performs, but it was impressive to see that this is the first time this event was on its own and brought more cars than ever before, over 400. I heard as they were trying to announce for closer to 400, getting there and they hit 400. But the people that were all over, the event started at 1:00 and at 12:30, actually, I got to say hello to some people down there, like, that were there before it opened, and it was packed. So a phenomenal event, and the volunteerism that went to make it happen was awesome. So wanted to mention that. Also, to Rick Charme, your article in the weekend paper on Father's Day was one of the best articles I've read. So just to recognize the fathers out there, and it's a day late, but for Father's Day and how you emphasize the importance of them, I thought that was impressive. So enjoyed the article as well. And then, Macey, I just wanted to just add, I know last week I did talk in the Go to the Order about just making sure that we follow our process when it comes to the employment related things. And I, I just wanted to be known on the record that I still feel that we need to give that courtesy to the citizens, and I would really like it to be noted that I am putting on the record of that, this process that I don't approve of that, that I think we should do like we're doing with one of them tonight, and we'll be discussing in the post-session, but to make sure we look at all of them and make sure that we are following the right process. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Malama?
I wanted to mention too, Rick, very nice article. How young were you when that picture was taken, Rick?
It was April.
Okay. It's usually when you guys run a picture of myself. Yeah, all right. Also wanted to mention that Back to the Bricks was excellent, great, third year in a row, keeps growing. Also want to apologize to the Moose Lodge. They had a car show yesterday, and I missed it. And generally, I do not miss those car shows. Kind of a car buff myself. But anyway, I apologize, and it's great that we have that going on in the community. Also, I wanted to mention that I talked to a restaurant here downtown, and several businesses weren't open back to the bricks, but I talked to one of the restaurants, and between 1 and 5, he had nine employees working. That's great. That's great. That's, that's what's needed. And then I wanted to thank a couple ladies in the audience here for some issues and solutions over coffee. I've been kind of giving them a hard time. And of course, I cut out early. I had a family reunion, but when I cut out, the lights went out, so.
Yeah.
Anyway. But anyway, thank you, and there were several other words. I think we had a real good spirited discussion, and we talked about why that's important, that we can ask questions. It's an open forum, and as my wife said, it's kind of like organized chaos, you know, so. But we had a good discussion, but thank you. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers.
Well, everybody already talked about Back to the Bricks. The one thing I don't think you mentioned, and maybe you did indirectly, but my husband and I got there about a half hour before it closed down, and so, and we listened to all of the awards, but we were kind of disappointed that we hadn't had a chance to look at all of the cars. And so we walked south a block, so we were at that corner where the road was blocked off, and there they all emptied out and as they were trying to reopen the road. So we got to watch them all. It was really cool. But in the process of going down there, I passed people with bags, like they had gone shopping downtown, which was really neat. I'm sure the merchants really enjoyed that. But I wanted to thank Glenna Anderson for coming and speaking on behalf of the Cemetery Board. That sounds like a really neat project, putting up a memorial to those who served in the Civil War. Couple Fridays ago, I might be sharing way too much information here. A couple Fridays ago, my husband and I were eating at Aridors, and when we got done eating, they said, oh, it's getting ready for the sun to set. Let's go into the cemetery and watch the sunset, because the cemetery, you know, goes way up on this hill, and we've gone up there before and looked at the beautiful views from up there. So we went into the cemetery, and oh my gosh, that is a beautiful cemetery. And it's huge, you know, and we were in the news section, and of course, I saw names that I recognized, so I had to stop the car and get out and walk around. And then we drove through the old historical part, and boy, are we ever lucky to have a cemetery like that. It is absolutely beautiful. It's quite an asset for this community. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Petzschl?
I would agree, and I'll piggyback a little bit on Councilmember Smallman regarding cemetery comments, especially with respect to kind of thinking about how beautiful it is. We truly have a very hard-looking employee that oversees, that does everything from the, you know, administration and the management of the facility to, you know, hand digging the sites where necessary as well. Granted, in the summer, he has seasonal, I'll supervise, but he doesn't have seasonal there year-round, and so really is a testament to Brian's dedication out there, which is much appreciated. And likewise, to the rest of the operations, they really helped out over the, over the weekend with the car show. There were some ad moves and changes as late as I think, it was about 5:00 Friday before the show started, that we needed to adjust for it, so it took a whole team to make it happen. So very happy to report.
Okay, thank you. I would just say, and I think the Back to the Bricks event warrants every single one of us saying something about it. It was the most amazing thing that I've ever seen in Cadillac. Thousands of people and beautiful weather and so much excitement downtown that if you didn't, if you didn't get the opportunity to experience it, you really miss something. And I echo Councilmember Sherpas' thought that I would really love to see us work towards creating an event in downtown Cadillac during the summer months that would generate that kind of spirit, you know, whether we do it on Lake Street, or we do it on Harris Street, or we do it on Mitchell Street. There is something to be said about bringing people in this community together like that that gives us a common purpose, and people really enjoyed it. So I just want to send a shout out to Joy Vendry and to Gabby Chapman. I did have the pleasure of joining them for a volunteer dinner on Tuesday evening, and so I got to meet all the people behind that, and they're already talking about next year. They're very, very excited. So they did a fabulous job. I also want to remind the council and folks that the Freedom Festival is coming up, and so that gives us an opportunity to bring the community together again. And this year, I wanted to invite the entire council to walk in that parade together. I think that that would be something wonderful for us to do together. I think that that would be something wonderful for us to do together.
Carry the Cadillac flag?
If you can do whatever you want to.
You'd be good to do that. Let me know.
It might get heavy.
It might be better to carry the American flag on the 4th of July, though.
Yeah, we do both.
And the Michigan.
And the Michigan flag. There you go. Whatever, whatever's comfortable, but I think it would be fun for us to go all as a group and meet the community people and just enjoy the day. So I just wanted to throw that out there. So with that being said, I'll close Go to the Order, and...
Mayor, if I may, I was going to just mention with respect to the motion for closed session. And I'll just, if you will, I'll just read it.
That'd be fine.
So the request would be a motion to adjourn the closed session to discuss cutting litigation in the case of Blake R. Meyerings versus Civil Service Commissioner of the City of Cadillac, case number 14-25152, and to discuss written legal, excuse me, written confidential legal opinions with the city attorney, as well as to invite Vance Edwards, Director of the CWTA accordingly.
Okay. Can we, someone make the motion?
I'll make that motion.
Can we have support?
No, I believe it will be a couple. And Vance, Mr. Edwards would be a part of just one part of it. I'm going to be, excuse him.
In the last meeting, we had the discussion about making sure that we are a little clearer. And I was promised that in cases where it wasn't going to be affecting us, that we would include it in, and seeing the two topics that were sent to us, I don't see how that would at all be, I don't see how it'd be problematic to put in a motion what those legal opinions are. I think that we have two opportunities. I don't want to say one's an opportunity. We have a choice to be as minimal as we can and challenge the gray areas and such, or we have a choice to be professional. And Riley's comment and how positive or how great a staff we have, and I think that we would have the ability to include those so that it's clear and that we are not in a gray area of the Open Meetings Act, and just put it out there what those topics are for the legal opinion. We have one where we're including somebody, which would only make sense to allow the public to know why that individual, pretty most people are going to put two and two together anyhow, of why we're doing it. And I just see that we have an opportunity right now to be show the professionalism and be a professional organization and do that.
Is there anything else? Do we have support?
I'm a little uncomfortable with the way the motion was worded, because it doesn't sound like it was to a pass for two different topics, and it wasn't specific about which one Vance Edwards was going to be involved with. Can we be more specific?
Well, one of them involves the CWTA, so that's the only one that he would be present for in terms of the discussion.
So, back to Councilmember Stevens concerned, can you help me understand why we couldn't have just put that there?
About the CWTA?
Mm-hmm.
That's fine if that's what council wants to do. This isn't my decision. My decision is to protect the legal interests of the city. I disagree that it's a gray area under the Open Meetings Act. It is not a gray area. I've been doing this for 15 years.
We can have that discussion, but you also could agree that we are not required not to include it.
No, you...
And to me, to see how the community were that damages them to know is, I see your point on the legal aspect for us as a community, I think that it makes sense to just put it out there and have that as part of the motion.
That it involves the CWTA?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't have an objection to that. We're inviting the Director of the CWA, CWTA, into the session.
I'm in my motion to include legal opinion, a written confidential legal opinion regarding the CWTA. You have a city attorney?
With the rest of that?
With the rest of it. Yep. All right. Okay. Any further discussion? Sandy, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Sippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Felton?
Yes. Can we have a motion to return to open session?
I will make a motion to return to open session.
All right. Sandy, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Sippers?
Yes.
Mayor Felton?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor members of the City Council. At this time, it would be appropriate for me to request the City Council consider our motion authorizing the City of Cadillac to intervene in the Blake R. Meyerings v. Civil Service Commission of the City of Cadillac, case number 14-25152, as intervening defendants.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a support?
Support.
Thank you.
One clarification question, from my understanding then, is even though it was brought to us about a settlement offer, we weren't even in a position to even address that, because we were not at this time involved in the case. Does that sound accurate?
Yes. Are you looking at me or my, I was in check?
Yes. Do you want to both?
Yeah, see, you are not yet, in a technical legal sense, a party. You will be so after we intervene, and I understand that there was a pre-trial conference call, and there weren't any objections to the city intervening, so...
Thank you.
Okay. If nothing further, Sandy, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Sippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Felton?
Yes. Motion to hear it. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting.